All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this forum with the Ada County Commission candidates hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Greater Boise Area. I'm Jaclyn Cutler, an Assistant Professor in the School of Public Service at Boise State University. A little history on the League of Women Voters. In 1920, following a long campaign that began in this country in 1848 at Seneca Falls Convention, the Nineteenth Amendment of the Constitution extended the right to vote to women. The National American Woman Suffrage Association convened for a final time in 1920 and reemerged as a League of Women Voters of the United States. For 100 years, the League's mission has been to provide for and protect a democracy that can only be sustained by informing that participation. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to empower voters and defend democracy. They envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. As a result, the League of Women Voters Education Fund works to register voters, provide voters with election information through voter guides, as well as candidate forums like this evening. Tonight's forum is being recorded and livestreamed on the League of Women Voters of Idaho Facebook page, which you can find at LWVIdaho. It will also be eventually posted on social media through YouTube. That should be up in a day or so. So the League of Women Voters of Greater Boise Area is on Twitter and Instagram, so you can find them at LWVGreaterBoise, in case you want to watch this or access it later. Here is how tonight will proceed. This forum has three segments. The candidates will each first give an opening statement. We'll then move to the Q&amp;A portion with candidates responding to audience questions. And we'll end the forum with candidates' closing statements. All the questions are drawn from audience submissions. They're drawn from both the Q&amp;A function, so put in your questions, as well as questions that have been emailed to us beforehand. All questions will be asked of all candidates. And candidates will have three minutes to respond to each question. I will try to get through as many audience questions as possible. To achieve that, I request the candidates to try to stay within the three-minute timeframe. I will gently interrupt you if you do go over. I also request the candidates, remember this is a forum, not a debate, so please don't interrupt each other and wait for your turn to answer. Candidates are going to be grouped by their districts, so District One and District Two, for their order of their responses, which I will rotate throughout so that everyone has an opportunity to answer first throughout the forum. Again, put in your questions in the Q&amp;A function. And just as in the live forums in person, a League of Women Voters volunteer right now is gathering your questions, sorting them, and helping me kind of combine them so that we can ask the questions with the greatest interest. Unfortunately, we will not get through all of your great questions, so we encourage you to follow up with candidates and campaigns down the road if we don't get to your question. All right, so we're going to begin with the candidates' introductory statements. The candidates have drawn for their position for the order of their introductory statements. So we're going to start with District One, and first with Diana Lachiano.
Thank you so much for putting on this event tonight. I think with so much attention at the national level, it's a real treat to be able to talk about local issues, issues that affect us day in and day out. So I have been your commissioner for about 18 months, and I wanted to share with you why I ran in the first place. This was not some long-held dream of mine, but truly, I got frustrated. I felt like there were areas where the county in particular was not planning ahead and not getting ahead of issues before we see some of the problems that other communities have faced. Whether it's growth or how we're tackling the opioid epidemic, I felt like the county needed to be a leader in those arenas. So upon taking office, I set right to work to getting ahead of those things. We convened stakeholders to create a coordinated plan for growth. And for the first time, we are asking developers to actually pay impact fees so that local homeowners are not solely burdened with the cost of new infrastructure. We joined the nationwide opioid lawsuit because we recognize that so many of those burdens are falling on county government, and our families in our community deserve action in that area. I have much work to do. We're just getting started. But I've been so honored to be in this role, and I believe I'm in this for the right reasons. I'm not here to be a politician. I'm here to be a public servant, and I ask for the opportunity to earn your vote again in 2020.
Thank you. Ryan Davidson is the other candidate for District One.
Hello, my name is Ryan Davidson, and I'm running for Ada County Commissioner, Seat One. I was born and raised in Winnipeg, Manitoba. The family business was a successful and heavy machinery-moving company that was started by my grandpa and his brothers over half a century ago and is still in business today. My very first job as a really young teenager was washing down muddy cranes before I moved on to full-scale machinery-moving. Both my dad and my grandpa had an incredible work ethic that I got to witness up close. It was 1995. My dad decided that it was time for a change and that the family needed to look for new opportunities in America. My dad, he drove around the Pacific Northwest. He scouted different cities that we could potentially settle into, and he chose Boise. It was a gamble because the family had nothing lined up here. No house, no jobs, no schools. But it paid off because Ada County is such a fantastic place to live. And I think that's the story of a lot of Ada County residents. Idaho is still really a pioneer state. We've got a lot of land, small population, and just endless opportunities for people who want to move here and create a new life. Now, you can see pictures of me on my Facebook page of me and my dad moving dozens of antique cranes into the jump building downtown. But unlike my grandpa, the crane business was not really in my blood. I've always been fascinated by politics. I believe strongly in our constitutional rights. And I felt a calling to be involved at the grassroots level to try and change things for the better. So I've really had an interesting political career. I've done a lot of different things. After over a decade as a Republican precinct committeeman, I was elected to serve as the chairman of the Ada County Republican Party. I've recruited a lot of candidates to run for office. I've managed campaigns. I've run offices for gubernatorial candidates. I've worked with presidential candidates. I've argued in one front of the Idaho Supreme Court. I've got a good working relationship with all of our Republican legislators in Ada County and many across the entire state. So it's really that unique perspective and experience I hope to bring to the Ada County Commission. I am really a creative problem solver, and I want to work for you to increase our quality of life and to keep our taxes low. And I hope I can count on your support.
Great. Moving to District Two, we're going to start with Mr. Rob Beck.
Well, thank you, Jaclyn. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum for us. It's the first forum that I think we've had, and I don't know that it... I think we have, the Meridian Chamber of Commerce is going to have a forum, but I don't know of any others unless you all do. But it's great. Unfortunately, we're having to do it over this technological thing. I'd rather be doing it in person, but you know, we can't do that, so here we are. As a by way of introduction to myself, I've lived in Ada County since 1976. The reason I moved here is my wife grew up here. We wanted to be with her family. She graduated from Capital High School. I've been married to her for 46 years. And we raised our six children right here, all graduated from Centennial High School, three boys and three girls. And they've given us 17 grandchildren. And that is the, actually, the best part of life is having your grandchildren. Now, they don't all live close by. I have five that live in China and have four that live in Redondo Beach in California. But the rest of them live here, right close by, which we really enjoy them. Now, my political experience, I've been a Republican my entire life. I grew up on a farm in eastern Idaho, a potato farm, no less. And I had to milk like six cows, or six to 17 cows, every day before I went to high school. And so I learned the ethics of hard work and ingenuity at an early age. And I've used that ever since. It's an Idaho ingenuity. So yeah, I have a family farm background. We moved here to Boise to be with my wife's family. And anyway, I've been a Republican my entire life. I've been a delegate to three national conventions. I've been region chairman of the Ada Republican Party. And I've been a precinct committeeman many times. That's the grassroots organization, the Republican Party. And I'm proud of my party. If you look at all my signs and all my material, I prominently display that I'm a Republican, and I put the Republican elephant on all my material because I want everybody to know that I am the Republican. I'm not an incumbent. I'm seeking, it's an open seat. The incumbent for this job, he resigned, and so it's an open seat. But my political experience is, I was first elected to the Idaho Senate, and my colleagues elected me to be the Senate Majority Leader. Which was an interesting experience because I'd visit with business leaders and political leaders from all across the state in doing that. And when Phil Batt was elected to the governorship of the state of Idaho, he asked me to go over and run the Idaho Housing and Finance Association, which I did. I worked on affordable housing for three years or so, which was great executive experience. So I have a lot of experience in those areas. Now, there's a reason that I decided to run for this position. One, I think our budget is growing too rapidly. For instance, in 2017, the budget was $228 million. This last year, it was $288 million. That's more than the population growth, and it's more than inflation. So I'd kind of like to see if we could figure out a way to dampen the growth and yet maintain the quality of services. Public safety is also a number-one priority of mine. So my first priority is growth of the government and property taxes and quality government services, including public safety. I'm really concerned, and I don't want Idaho or Ada County to become like Portland, or Seattle, or Minneapolis. We have a great work ethic and a great community, and that's why we're so popular and why people are moving here, is because of our safety and our work ethic and good people.
Mr. Beck, I'm going to have to move on. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Bill Rutherford.
Hi. I wanted to thank you for having me here this evening. I think it's important to have these forums, especially during a pandemic when it's very difficult to get out and actually talk to people and meet people. I'm a professional. I have no partisan political agenda. I'm running to serve my community. I believe I'm qualified to serve as an Ada County Commissioner, and I wanted to offer voters an experienced, professional alternative to what I consider to be divisive partisan politics during this pandemic. 100% funded by individual contributions, and I'm running to serve the voters, not special interest groups. At $283 million a year and nearly 2,000 employees, the Ada County government provides essential services to Ada County residents. It is a big business. This is a big business. My qualifications and hands-on management experience are as follows. I'm a retired civil structural engineer, a former business owner, and an Army veteran. I'm a professional. I'm not a partisan politician. During my career, I've managed annual budgets as much as $460 million a year and up to 5,000 people. While working as a division director for the Hanford site up in Washington State, I was nationally recognized on three separate occasions for significantly reducing government spending. I have extensive planning experience in the public and private sector, and I've managed commercial, large-scale infrastructure projects all over the United States. I sincerely want to work with all parties involved to find solutions that benefit our residents and our businesses. As far as civic involvement, I presently volunteer as a Medicare counselor for the State of Idaho Department of Insurance and counsel clients who need help with Medicare and give introduction presentations to people becoming eligible for Medicare. In the past, I've been on building and property strategic planning committees for a local school board, and have also conducted workshops and seminars for nonprofit organizations affiliated with the United Way, conducting seminars on things like time management, decision-making, negotiating, and budget management. My volunteer experience, professional experience and background make me qualified to be an Ada County Commissioner, and I wanted to bring all of that to work for our county and the residents. Thank you.
Great. We're going to move on to audience questions. And so our first question is, what are the most important challenges facing our county? And how do you propose to address them? So we'll start with Mr. Davidson with District One.
Well, our most important challenge is, right now, obviously, with like the rest of the country, is the COVID pandemic. And helping Ada County navigate through the rest of the end of the pandemic is something I'm going to be working very hard on as a commissioner. You know, our business community has been greatly affected, just like everywhere across the country. And I think, you know, we need to do whatever we can to get the economy open and running again. I plan to be a conduit for business, so whatever I can do to help businesses get back on their feet, we need to look at lowering taxes, fees, regulations, whatever we need to do to help get our economy up and going again. Otherwise, we're going to be facing a recession. You know, we previously had recessions, and it sort of decimated downtown Boise. It took decades for it to recover. So I'm here to be a friend of business to keep the economy running. Other big issue, obviously, is property tax, and we need to, it needs to be a big focus. And I plan to work with the legislature to change the law at the state level. And that's really, you know, we're going to just be kicking the can down the road until we can get a permanent solution at the legislative level, which could include changing the law that ties property taxes to real estate prices because, obviously, the cost of housing in Ada County is only going up. We're only getting more popular. And, you know, you have Californians and people from out of state who have higher market economies moving in, buying up the houses, which is raising the market and thus raising the taxes. It's going to take some, you know, a lot of collaborative work. But meanwhile, at the county level, I'll be looking to keep the budget low, not to take the foregone taxes, and working with hopefully another Republican Commissioner to come up with a plan to help all of Ada County.
All right, Ms. Lachiano.
Thank you. So the number-one issue that I think really sort of undergirds all of the issues we're facing is growth. And it doesn't necessarily mean that it's negative. As Mr. Davidson noted, people are moving here because we have an excellent quality of life, and people love it here. But it does pose challenges for us because we have to respond to that growth. And, you know, when I was on the campaign trail knocking on thousands of doors in 2018, it was really on the tip of everyone's tongue, and that hasn't changed, whether it is traffic, or housing affordability, or just, you know, sometimes a loss of sense of place of what they remember from growing up here. That really leads into the second big challenge, which is keeping up with our facilities' needs. I just got off the phone with the coroner this afternoon, and even without the deaths that she's having to address because of COVID, we're just bursting at the seams in the coroner's office. Similarly, our jail has failed its inspection four years in a row. So when Commissioner Kenyon and I walked into office, really the beginning of January in 2019, we were frankly somewhat shocked by how far behind the county was in terms of long-term capital planning. And unfortunately, that costs taxpayers money. There's a cost of doing nothing when construction prices go up year after year. And finally, COVID, absolutely. I have been right at the heart of navigating COVID on behalf of our county, as well as my role on the Board of Health. And it's, you know, not a year anybody hoped or imagined. So we are all navigating it with how we're addressing it at the county. And I'm really mindful of how kids and families and businesses are addressing the situation, and we need to come out whole and healthy and safe in order to have a prosperous economy into the future.
All right, moving to District Two, Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you. Good question. I really would like to focus on the budget, primarily the budget. Money is the critical path to everything. And you really have to pay attention to where it's going, set priorities, get into the details of the budgets. I have a significant amount of experience doing this, and I believe I could help the existing commission continue with their efforts to lower costs, but at the same time, make sure we're covering our really significant services that we cover. Ada County employs a tremendous number of first responders, and we have a significant burden there to make sure that they are safe, that they're able to do their job. When you pick up the phone and call 911, the ambulance gets there in a reasonable amount of time. The police get there in a reasonable amount of time. So this all costs money. And, you know, it's easy to say you're going to cut the budget, but my experience has been, it's not easy to do. You really have to get into the details and understand the impacts to all of the services you provide. 50% of the county's budget is paid for by property taxes, and the other 50% is paid for with services, service fees. So my focus would be to start with the overall overhead cost of Ada County, plus the departmental overhead cost, and really focus on that. The next thing I would really be looking at is the growth, which has already been talked about. We have outpaced our infrastructure. It's very clear, if you live in Meridian and you try to drive to Boise, it used to be a 20-minute drive. Now, if you're lucky, it's a 45-minute drive. So we have definitely outgrown our infrastructure, and we really need to look at that and give our infrastructure a chance to catch up. And it's not just the physical infrastructure. It's the medical infrastructure. It's the schools. It's all aspects of, you know, what services we rely on. So I really think planning's important, long-range planning. Comments about our facilities need to be seriously taken into consideration. We need to look at our preventative maintenance, corrective maintenance programs. So I would be focused on that. And the pandemic, which is kind of a shadow over everything at the moment, has been really hard on people and is going to continue to be hard on people. And I think we have to look at the impacts on individuals. We have to look at the impacts on businesses. Parents who have to struggle every day with, do I make a decision to send my kids to school? Do I keep them home? Do I go to work? Do I stay home? You know, so I think our support of the Central District Health Organization is absolutely critical, and we need to keep funding them at the level we fund them at. And Ada County Commissioner Lachiano serves on the Board of the Central District Health Committee. She needs to continue to be allowed to do that and really provide common sense answers to what we're dealing with. We need to listen to health professionals and those people in the business.
Reached your time limit. Moving on to Mr. Beck. I'm sorry, Mr. Beck, you're on mute.
There you go. Thank you. Well, my top priorities, to be real clear, what I consider the three top priorities in the county is the number-one priority is really budgeting and taxes because people's taxes are raised significantly. And it's not just in Ada County. It's all across the state. That's the reason that the state legislature has an interim committee to study the property tax issue, to see if they can come up with a solution to stop this ever-increasing burden on homeowners. When you pay property taxes, you never really own your home. You're paying a lot of money every year, and so it needs to be addressed. And I think that's a good way to address it. The legislature is doing this interim committee. And every Republican legislator in Ada County is endorsing me, plus some of the other leadership across the state. And so I think I would have a key aspect to get, to talk to the legislators and see if we can't come up with a solution to this property tax problem. Now, I said budgeting. I think we ought to do zero-based budgeting. That doesn't mean necessarily cut the budget. That means a more responsible way to budget. Because I want to provide quality services. There was a study just recently done. Ada County is one of the highest, safest place in the United States. And that's part of the reason that we have such a huge demand for people coming to Boise is because there's people moving here from Chicago, from New York, from Minneapolis, from Portland. They're tired of the chaos that's taking place in those cities, and they're moving. They see that Idaho, Ada County, is a safe place to live, and so they moved to Ada County. I want to keep that safe because I think that's the main thing that we can do as county commissioners, is keep our community safe and to work hard to provide enough jobs for our citizens and for those that are moving here. Growth is another big issue, and we can resolve the growth issue. Part of the problem that we have with the increasing cost of housing is we have a lack of supply. We don't have enough houses all over the valley. And this is the most, it's quite hot, the housing market right now. And it's done something that I've never seen it do before. It's hot in every segment of the market. That's because there's people moving in here from all over the United States because they want a safe place to live. And we need to do something to increase the supply of housing so that the housing prices doesn't get so high and affordability, we lose affordability. So if we have higher-paying jobs, increase the supply of housing, and do things to work on our infrastructure, I think we'll be just fine.
Great. Moving to our next question. We've got several questions about, you know, engaging with constituents and keeping the public informed. So the question is, how will you keep the public informed and engage with your constituents, especially thinking about the challenges presented by COVID-19? And kind of how will you communicate information to the public? And we're going to switch it up and start with District Two this time. And Mr. Beck, I'm going to start with you.
Well, that's a good question. And I've always, in all my campaigns and in all my experience in the public, right here, I keep a, I put my telephone number, my email address, my website, right on my campaign material. I want to be readily accessible to every constituent in Ada County. And so my number will be available, my email address will be available because I think that is deeply important, that we communicate with the constituents, that if there's an issue, we can get right on the issue. And so I will just advertise my phone number, my email address, so that I can communicate with every constituent in Ada County.
Mr. Rutherford?
Along those lines, I think that's important to have personal contact. But I also think we need to have an open forum on some periodic basis where, just like this, we can take questions, we can answer questions, you know, give people the chance to tell us what's on their mind. It's a fluid situation we're in with this pandemic, and I think people are going to be wanting to know what's going on. We can also publicize things on our websites. So there's many different ways we can communicate. It's a barrier having this pandemic, and we need to continue to work through that. And I think we can. I think the technology is there to do it. And it's just making the effort, and I would certainly support making that effort.
Ms. Lachiano?
Thank you. So engaging with citizens is so important to me. And right from the time I started campaigning in 2018 till now, I have personally talked with and texted thousands of voters in Ada County. And it was really important to me to continue that when I took office. So I have held community meetings from Eagle to Kuna to Boise, and that hasn't stopped with COVID. I used to do coffee-with-your-commissioner meetings. Now it is virtual, but it has allowed us to engage conversations in different ways, and I've really enjoyed that. We've also made sure that in our operations in county government, we're really opening the doors. And there's a couple different examples of that. We hosted community growth conversations in all four quadrants of Ada County, inviting people in to share their frustrations, to listen to what our challenges are, and so that we could really hear the burden that they are feeling as growth is continuing to happen in this community. Similarly, as it relates to the Ada County Fairgrounds, from the moment I took office, there were ideas for the fair. And instead of the three commissioners sitting back in the courthouse and determining what to do after the end of horsefacing, we said, you know what, we need to have a really open and robust process to listen to the people of Ada County. This is the public's property. So we have done just that, created a very robust stakeholder process. And in fact, COVID, I think, has actually allowed that... And in fact, COVID, I think, has actually allowed that to be even more accessible to the public. And we have hundreds of people watching as that committee is engaging and walking through that process. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done to really open ourselves up to the community and share what's going on with their county business.
Mr. Davidson.
Well, I think we we have all the technology in place right now, Facebook, Twitter, emails, we just need to utilize it better. And, you know, unfortunately, the Ada County Commission is probably the the government body that gets the least attention locally. Everybody tends to focus on federal and congressional and senatorial issues. You get a lot of people focusing on legislative hearings. And then you get a lot of people down at Boise City Hall or Meridian City Hall for council meetings. Ada County Commissioner hearings are generally very poorly attended. And it's it's tough to, you know, really get the word out to the public about how important the Commissioner Office is. You know, you've got three commissioners dealing with, it's eventually going to be three hundred million dollars in in tax revenue. Responsible for setting the budget for the sheriff, the coroner, parks, weed, mosquitoes, just about everything you can think of. And so it's it's kind of depressing that more citizens are not interested in interacting with the county commission. I think we just need to do a better job and just, you know, I think, I appreciate the direction the current commission is moving. We need to keep utilizing technology. I don't think we necessarily need a high paid, you know, public affairs person to to be the interface to the public. I think each commissioner has the technology available to directly interact with the public, to quickly post online on Facebook about issues or events that are coming up, to be able to invite people down to Commissioner hearings. You just need commissioners that are willing to do that and to actually get out there and engage. And so, yeah, utilizing the technology we already have. I do like the 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 commission that was appointed to take public input on the future of the Fairgrounds property. I think it is very important to get a broad input from the community on the future of that property because it's going to affect Ada County significantly, whatever goes there. There's just hundreds of thousands of people who use that Fairgrounds property every year. And we need to make sure that we do right by the community. I am a little bit concerned about, you know, the the committee itself and whether it was selected by the commissioners to reach a conclusion that is more favorable to the commissioners. So if I get in there, we'll be reviewing who's on the committee and making sure that we have a truly non biased section of the community to weigh in on this really important issue, future of Hawks, LeBlanc and the Fairgrounds.
All right, well, not surprisingly, we're getting lots of questions about COVID nineteen. So first, we're going to start with a question asking, what do you think we've learned at the county level about the status of our public health system as we deal with COVID nineteen? And is there anything you'd like to see changed? And we're going to start with Mr. Rutherford for this question.
Well, I think we've learned quite a bit about COVID nineteen itself in the last six months. Really, I think the best thing the Central District Health Group has done is kind of simplify some things that we can do. And really, you know, wear a mask, practice social distancing, wash your hands. You know, basically pay attention to what you're doing and what's going on around you. You know, in the meantime, while we're waiting for a vaccine or a way to mitigate this this pandemic. You know, there's there's a lot of pressure, public pressure to open up businesses, to, you know, let people go back to what they used to do, their their routine. And I mean, it affects everybody. It absolutely affects everybody, every aspect of our life. I go to the store, I have a little bag I carry with my mask and my hand sanitizer and, you know, so every time I go out the door, it's, I'm very cognizant of this. So it's, it's not an easy thing to deal with day in, day out. But I think it's proven that if you do these three simple things, that we can keep this, we can keep this virus from spreading. We can keep this area from becoming a hotspot. And throughout the country, if you look at places that have abandoned these practices, it's pretty predictable what's going to happen. So I think we need to listen to the professionals, we need to listen to physicians, the scientists. This is their business. And I don't think this should be a political issue at all. I think it's a science issue, it's a medical issue. And I would do everything I can if I was commissioner to help keep it that way. I really think we need to rely on these people who have the education and the experience. And we also need to continue to fund the Central Health District and these people that are on these these boards so they can do their work.
All right, Mr. Beck.
Would you state the question again?
Of course. So what do you think we've learned at the county level about the status of our public health system as we deal with COVID nineteen? And is there anything you'd like to see changed?
Okay, I think the main thing we've learned about the Central District Health is that there is one. I think a lot of people were surprised that that there was a Central District Health. I had a forum here a while back where the, it was interviewed by a group. And I talked to them about there's a county commissioner on the Central District Health. They were aghast, they did not know that a county commissioner is on the Central District Health. I think you're going to see a lot of changes to the Central District Health in the upcoming legislative session. Because I think that is one thing we've learned is that there, it's been a real quiet organization, Central District Health, in in the last number of years. And with the spotlight that's been placed on the Central District Health, there are people that are interested in some changes to the Central District Health. I'm not sure what those changes are going to be. I think the legislature will 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 deal with those changes. But again, people were shocked when they found out that one of the county commissioners from Ada County is on the Central District Health. They didn't know that. Now they do. So we've learned that. We've learned a lot of other things about this about this virus from when it first first appeared. And one of the things that that I am hopeful for is that we can get back to normal. I mean, I am so thankful that the Mountain West is going to have football games because you can't have a campaign without football games. And we're going to have a football, a couple, Mountain West is going to start playing football in the next couple of weeks. And people want to get back to normal. And I think they're slowly starting to do that, and I think they're doing it in a safe way. I trust the people to to protect themselves and to, I like the 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 North Dakota situation. That mayor, that governor has done a great job of, or South Dakota, excuse me. And anyway, I think we're going to, we've learned a lot about the virus, we've learned a lot about the Central District Health. And yes, there's going to be some changes. And I hope to participate into into determining what those changes are in the upcoming legislative session. Thank you.
All right, moving to District One, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, yeah. We, we've had a long period of time under COVID right now. And I think the science, the evidence is in. And we know how this virus operates, we know how it spreads. We know how, you know, you have different states who've tried different states are generally the same. I mean, there's no magic cure here. We're all anxiously waiting for the vaccine. But of course, it's possible vaccine may never come. It could be a year away, it could be two years away. It's impossible to say. And so we can't sacrifice our economy, crossing our fingers, hoping a vaccine will miraculously solve everything. How do you vaccinate three hundred million citizens in an effective and timely manner? So we have to focus on getting back to our regular lives. And we're able to do that now because we've we've seen how the virus works and the science is in. And we can see that the main population that needs to be protected are elderly citizens. The the death rate of COVID is largely ninety five percent people over seventy years old, who generally have preexisting conditions. That is the populate, population we need to strive even harder to protect. You know, when this first started, we didn't realize that we needed to protect senior citizen centers and retirement homes. It was sort of a one size fits all solution. We've now had the shutdowns, we've had partial real openings, we're going back and forth. But the the emergency rooms are not overflowing with patients. That was the number one concern because we didn't want to burden the emergency rooms and the healthcare systems. They're not being overburdened at the moment. So it's time to focus on getting the economy. And I think we do that by asking people to wear masks and continue to social distance. Let the businesses set their own policies about who can come in. If businesses choose to continue to stay closed, they can do that. But we've seen all of our big companies do a pretty good job of setting their own policies in business. We need to get the government on board, there's too many school districts that are closed down. We need to get the kids back in school. The, you know, everything is a trade off. And, you know, the shutdowns will have their own negative consequences, which we have to weigh against the benefits of stopping COVID. And so this is not the plague like we first thought. And, you know, even if I give the government the benefit of the doubt that the shutdowns in the beginning were necessary, it's time to reopen. We we've shut down, we now know how the virus works. And I think we can fully reopen our economy and get back to reality as long as we practice common sense safety measures like masks and social distancing and washing your hands. But it's time. I mean, the economy is going to continue to to collapse if we stay shut down and we need to reopen.
Mr. Davidson, you've reached your time. All right, Ms. Lachiano, Lachiano, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay, no worries. So I I kind of just want to reframe or refresh the question because I think it was about the state of our public health system. And to some of my fellow panelists notes, this wasn't a well known agency. And and that's because they're really, most of the time, behind the scenes, doing just the work that needs to get done to keep people safe. Whether it's food inspections at restaurants so you don't get E. coli or septic system approvals so that your neighbor's septic tank doesn't run into the water supply. It's really that day in and day out work that they do to ensure the public health. And the health districts are creations of the legislature. They were set up in the seventies, really so that rural counties would have access to the same level of resources as more urban counties. Because in other states, it's usually a county run health department. As you might imagine, when I joined the Board of Central District Health, I never expected to be in this position. This was not something I hoped for or was excited to have to do. But I'm really grateful to be in a position to try to help our community. And for me, I always adhere to really what are the overarching goals? And those have been twofold since the beginning of this pandemic. Protect the vulnerable and not overwhelm the healthcare system. And it's it's really that second part that is so hard to grasp. And and we're constantly looking at the numbers to see how many cases then translates to how many hospitalizations. And I'll just share with you, back in July, we were in a really bad situation. We had every single health system leader coming to us and saying, you have got to do something right now. And on a personal note, my husband is an internal medicine physician who practices in outpatient setting. He hadn't actually worked in the hospital in more than five years. But when his employer came to him and asked him to go work in the hospital in Nampa, that really says something. I'm sure he did fabulous job, but it 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 really is, we were running through staff so quickly because people were either getting infected or they were having to quarantine. So we have to stay vigilant, even though we're all over the virus. I'm a working mom trying to juggle commissioning while facilitating learning for my kids. It is not fun. But we're trying to balance those things so that if your grandmother has a stroke, we still have a hospital system that's in place to take care of her. And we are in a good position right now, but obviously watching those numbers to see where they go.
All right, so a lot more questions, especially about countywide orders for wearing masks and things. So one question reads, do you support, you know, current county wide restrictions related to COVID nineteen? Like physical distancing, wearing masks, limited crowds, those types of things. And so we'll start with District One now, and so Ms. Lachiano.
Thank you. So again, this was not a position I ever imagined being in. But, you know, having to get on these calls and make really hard decisions a week after week as we were seeing the numbers increase. So again, every single system leader in our community came to us and asked us to institute a mask order. But simultaneously, I had many, many business owners reaching out to me to say, we need your backup. We need you to help us because we want to do the right thing, but we feel burdened and we feel targeted. So you need to back us up in this. And I definitely heard that. For me, as I related those first two goals about protecting the vulnerable, not overwhelming the healthcare system, I have always had an eye toward how can we safely get our kids back to school? That has to be a priority for us. And I'm so grateful that finally we're at least in the yellow and I'd like us to get even further down. But everything's a balance, right? If we start saying, yes, it's fine to have large crowds of people, is that going to make it more difficult to have more in person school? Because it will lead to more COVID infections. So this is a really difficult balancing act. For me, I'm always looking at the data. I am not an epidemiologist, so I am listening to our staff epidemiologist because this is what she is trained to do.
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Well, if I'm elected, I'll be, you know, immediately meeting with all the mayors of the Treasure Valley, the business leaders, the other stakeholders. We we need to come to a collaborative solution. Because, look, we we have to be honest, despite the fact these restrictions in place, and even though they seem to have criminal penalties attached, there is just widespread people who are, you know, have decided to go back to the regular life. And there are large gatherings. Go to Kleiner Park in Meridian right now, you're going to see over fifty people playing basketball. I mean, the thought was to restrict the size of the meetings to prevent the spread. Well, we're having large gatherings and legal or illegal, as they may be, they're happening all over the valley every day. And we're not seeing massive numbers at the emergency room. And so, look, again, we do have to follow the science. And I think the science has shown and human nature has shown, people will assess the risk for themselves. You know, I have to look around with my own two eyes and utilize my common sense and see that, you know, the vast majority of our population has gone back to normal. And the rest are wearing masks and social distancing and the world is not ending. You know, we have to get back to opening up Ada County, getting our kids back in school. You know, when you have, when you have doctors on boards who have the the power to make law, even though they weren't elected, you're going to have doctors taking the overly cautious route and putting in restrictions that may not have necessarily a basis in reality. Because while the doctors are just focusing on the illness and the virus, elected officials who are accountable to the people have to take everything into consideration. Not just the illness, but the impacts of shutdowns. What's that, what's that doing to our kids? What's that's doing to our economy, our jobs, just our quality of life? So I I support a much more nuanced balancing act. And I think we can make progress if we have the courage to go forward.
All right, moving to District Two, Mr. Beck.
Well, that's a difficult question. I do think the the board has gone overboard too much. And it may have been appropriate at the at the time they did it, but it's not appropriate now, I think. And people are, like Ryan suggested, people are smart enough about their own health and they can take care of themselves. We have had in the last month or so, just last week, I attended a gathering in I attended a gathering in Eagle where 750 people were there. Maybe we violated the law. I don't know. The, it was outside. The mayor of Eagle was there. And they had set the chairs up, so there was proper social distancing. And I think those kinds of things can occur. We don't need the government forcing that sort of thing on citizens. I think people are smart enough that they can figure out for themselves how to protect their own health. And I think they will do that. We just need to get back to school, back to, back to normal. We need to get the kids back in school. And, and I think we are at a point where we can do that. People are smart enough to figure out how to social distance. I have no problems with people wearing masks. I mean, and I think when the private sector, the, when, for instance, I go into a grocery store and they have a sign, wear a mask, I always wear a mask. I don't have any problem with, with, with the private sector asking people to do that. But, but we can have larger gatherings. I mean, like, like, like Ryan said, Kleiner Park, there's a lot of people there. My daughter and her two little kids were there just today. And we need to get back, back to normal. There is an, a cost. When you, when you impose things like that, there's a cost involved in it. And we always have to outweigh the risks versus the cost. And I think there's been too many people locked up in their houses and it causes all kinds of mental, mental problems, mental illness. The Commissioner LaCian mentioned opioids. I think opioid addiction has gone up. All kinds of things have happened because we've had people locked in. I think I even know of a death of a senior citizen because she was locked in, couldn't, couldn't visit anybody. So I think we should open this thing up, really, and let people protect themselves and be cautious, wear a mask, be social distance. We'll get, we will get this virus handled because I think we're on the cusp of getting it handled anyway. And I agree, it shouldn't be a political issue, but unfortunately it has become a political issue.
Mr. Rutherford.
Well, I, I think the original question was, do you support mask mandates? I guess my answer is, yes, I do. Masks reduce the spread of the virus. That's been proven all over the world, not, not just the United States. I do support masks at indoor public places or where there are crowds and social distancing can't be observed. So that's my short answer to that very important question.
All right, moving on, we have a question. We're just lots of different questions about growth and those types of things. This question, you know, says that there's some concerns about infrastructure in the county not keeping up with growth. And what is your opinion on increasing impact fees on new development as a way to offset increases in property taxes? In other words, trying to shift burden onto developers and off existing taxpayers? So, you know, what's your kind of opinion on that? We'll start with, we're back to District One now. And so Commissioner LaCian.
Thank you. So as I met with homeowners and folks all around the county, again, growth was on the tip of everyone's tongue and people feeling the pressure, feeling the rising property taxes and how it is affecting them. And so we got in right away to figure out, how can we look at alternate solutions to fund these really important needs that we have? As Mr. Beck said, this is one of the safest, if not the safest counties in the country. And that comes with the price tag. There's some things that we need to take care of. So we realized that Ada County had had the ability to assess impact fees from the legislature for more than 15 years, but had not chosen to do so. So we worked with all of our fire districts to set impact fees for those fire districts. And we're in the process of looking at them for both the jail and the coroner's office. Now, unfortunately, had that been done more than a decade ago, we would have had a pool of funds to be able to tap into to do those capital projects that are very much upon us right now. But I intend to ensure that that, those impact fees are seen through because it's so important for us to make sure that we're not putting the burden of all this new growth just on existing taxpayers.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. Yeah, I, growth needs to pay for itself, obviously. And we all, I think we all support impact fees, but it clearly cannot be a disproportionate amount that we're laying on the business community. You know, the construction industry employs thousands and thousands of Idahoans. If we try to just extract too many fees out of them, you're going to have smaller companies going out of business that just can't afford to build. We need to not look at business as just the endless supply of money to the government. Because we see what happens, you know, places like California where businesses are just being taxed unnecessarily. They're moving to places like Texas, you know, even celebrities, you know, Joe Rogan with the biggest podcast in the world. He just sold it for $100 million. He's moving out of LA, moving to Texas. So is Ben Shapiro. So, so the impacts on businesses have real-world effects for Idahoans. But yes, we do do need to focus on infrastructure, make sure that we are collecting just the appropriate amount necessary from and we are going to have to figure out a new way to fund the jail entered for our jail facility. If we don't keep up with our constitutional responsibilities, the court will force us to. Looking at the coroner's office, it may be time for some upgrades and I think we can do it without having to build an entirely new facility. I think we need to look to maximize the infrastructure that we have. You know, there's a call for more courtrooms to be built because the courts are handling too many cases. I don't think we're, we're utilizing the courtrooms that we have now effectively down at 5:00 PM. We should have a second shift so that the courts could be where we're hearing cases in the East and limit the need for a new building. I don't think we need a new building. We need to even examine some of the things that we're hauling people into court for. And also, we need to implement technology in the court system. Right now, the court house is shut down and people have to appear in front of a judge the same way we're doing right now, from the comfort of their home over Zoom. Well, why hasn't this technology been implemented before the virus? You know, it was very convenient for the government to haul people into court. You know, schedule them a hearing at 1:00, force them to stay till 2:30 because they have 50 hearings at 1:00. Force them to come back another time and spend another afternoon to deal with simple matters that could, as we see now, be dealt with by citizens over technology. So there's a lot of innovative ideas we can come up with to decrease the use of these county facilities to prevent us from having to build just, you know, a whole bunch of new buildings. It's really going to hurt the taxpayers.
All right, moving to District Two, Mr. Rutherford.
Question had to do with impact fees and that's a very, that's a very direct question. Impact fees are aimed at developers. It's actually called developers' impact fees. It's a one-time assessment when a developer proposes a new subdivision or a new construction. And it's really one of the few ways which we can lower taxes. So if you don't support impact fees and you're saying that you want to lower taxes, those two things contradict each other. The only other choice you have is to lower services. So I really don't think the county has much choice. I think the county has to look at this as a source of funding. The only responsibility the county has, I think, is to be fair in what they're establishing as impact fees. And actually, the process itself, where they have an advisory board to establish the impact fees is a pretty fair process. It calls for two people from the real estate business to be on this advisory committee. It calls for somebody from the finance world to be on this advisory committee. So you have some pretty fair representation there. And from what I can learn of the process, I think it's a fair way to share the cost of growth between the taxpayers who live here and the taxpayers who are going to live here. And I just, I don't really see any other options. I mean, the costs of growth are there and we're not going to stop growing. And we're not going to stop accumulating these costs. So to me, it's a very fair process. And it's really up to the county commissioners and the other managers of government. Boise, City of Boise, City of Meridian, Ada County Highway District to keep it fair and make sure that these fees are being applied appropriately to what their intended purpose is.
All right, Mr. Beck.
Well, that's a good question. Many of you may not realize it, but I was in the legislature when impact fees was first authorized. I did vote for the first authorization of impact fees for the local highway district. It later, it later was, was advanced to, to where cities could impose an impact fee. Boise City has a park impact fee. And Ada County has had an impact fee capability for a long time and just hasn't used it. However, the only reservation I have about impact fees is they need to be applied fairly and they need to be actually to go to the cost of infrastructure or the cost of the development. And by the way, the, an impact fee is not a cost to a developer or a, or a home builder. An impact fee just added to the cost of the home. Because a home builder, when they get it, when they get their building permit, that's when they pay the impact fee. And and so it advances the cost of the home. And if we can do things to cut down other regulations so that we can increase the supply of housing, which would make housing more affordable, then an impact fee may, may be acceptable. I think we need to work with all stakeholders, make sure that we have, if we impose another impact fee, that it is, it is not burdensome and that it is fair and equitable and it will, and it will increase the supply of housing and not decrease the supply of housing. Thank you.
All right, following up on the same topic, we're getting lots of questions about property taxes and some people interested in, you know, there's been some discussion of property tax reform in the legislature. And so the idea of would property tax reform help benefit homeowners in Ada County? What sort of property tax reforms might you support? Recognizing, of course, that some of this is not necessarily going through just the county commission. I will start with District Two and Mr. Beck.
There's a number of issues there that are in front of the interim committee right now. One of the issues that seems to be kind of gathering a little bit of steam is to stop the foregone taxes that, that capability that the cities and counties have. Ada County has a, I don't know, 12 or $14 million foregone tax balance, which means they haven't assessed that balance and haven't collected it, but they can in the, in the future. That seems to be one thing that they're discussing. Another thing they're discussing is what they actually proposed last year, which is put a freeze on property tax to get all the, all of the stakeholders together so that they can really come up with a solution, because we do have to come up with a solution. We've had several instances in Idaho's history when the relief valve was blown wide open. They, Idaho actually did pass a 1% initiative in the late seventies, but it didn't work because it was patterned after the California thing and it was because property taxes were just skyrocketing. Later, there was, that's when the homeowner's exemption was put on. The homeowner's exemption was put on to try and put some relief on property, on property taxes. And I think that could be one of the, one of the issues. We haven't had a, we used to have a, an index, a housing index, and the homeowner's exemption was tied to that housing index. But then the legislature repealed it and I think we're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to get the, the homeowner's exemption back in, in the fair market value where it should be. And that could be applying it to this, to this housing index again. There's a number of good, of good solutions and there, there's good people looking at it. And I hope that I would be able to work because I'm, I'm very familiar with the, with the legislative process. I've got good friends up there. I think we can all work together and we can come up with a solution, a long-term solution to this property tax equation.
All right, Mr. Rutherford.
Yeah, it's a very, very good question. A lot of moving parts when it comes to property taxes. I think the main burden really rests with the Idaho legislature and the issue of funding public education. They have, they have failed to do anything this year. They had it on, they had it on the docket. They did not do anything. So far, I hear a lot of discussion, but I don't see anything actually getting done. And they need to get public schools funded so that the burden of these special assessments does not fall on property owners. And right now, that's what's happening. It's been happening for quite some time. That being said, I think the county itself has its own responsibility to manage its budget. And you can see that this year, there was a budget for, for the year 2021 passed that lowered the cost of the budget, basically a zero tax option. And all the essential services were funded. So I think the commissioners did a really good job at tackling a very tough issue and giving people tax relief during this COVID situation. The other thing the legislature does is hand unfunded mandates to the county. Example of that is all the public defenders that we were told to hire in the county, we were also told to pay for. The legislature did not pick up the ball and give any financial assistance to any counties in the state of Idaho. We also, in our prison system, we house state prisoners, responsibility of the state. And they need to pay us for that. They need to pay the county for that service so that the burden doesn't fall on the taxpayers. We had to fight for Medicaid expansion. Once we got Medicaid expansion, the first thing the legislators want to do is take it away from the county and spend it somewhere else. So there's things that the legislators do that really put a burden on the county and they, they need to be addressed. The county needs to address those things, educate the public on those things so that the residents of Ada County can talk to their elected officials and voice their opinion about that. It's also, last thing is, if I was elected, I have extensive experience in dealing with overhead costs. And I would bring that to the commission and hopefully look at all of Ada County government's overhead costs and try to find some economy there and ways to lower our budget in our taxes.
All right, moving to District One, Commissioner, Commissioner LaCian.
Thank you. Well, I first just want to empathize and recognize you asked about talking to constituents and I have heard just some absolutely heartbreaking stories of people who are worried they're not going to be able to stay in their homes because of rising property taxes. So I'm really proud that this year our budget is actually coming in $3 million less than last year. And we worked really hard to get there, both because we knew it was the right thing to do because of COVID and what people are feeling. And also, we're delivering savings back to the taxpayers. And I want to give a special shout out to people who helped get Medicaid passed because folks may not understand this, but the county has the county indigent fund and we have the burden for paying for people who can't afford their medical bills. So that we have seen drastic reductions in the need to use that statutorily mandated fund because of Medicaid expansion. And in fact, it's saving us millions of dollars. And that's how we are still able to deliver on essential services that people care about, like making sure we are safe and secure and making sure they don't have to wait forever to get a driver's license, which is one I know people are particularly excited about in West Ada County. So it is so important to do that at the county level, but the legislature needs to do their part. And it's actually not that difficult. And there are bipartisan solutions out there and they are threefold. As Mr. Beck noted, the homeowner's exemption was capped in 2016. And that has meant that more and more of the tax burden is being pushed onto residential properties. Number two, the circuit breaker, which is specifically for low-income seniors, for veterans, for widows. That amount has not been updated since 2006. And that had bipartisan support in the Senate, but did not get a hearing in the House. And lastly, as Mr. Rutherford noted, our schools, I hear from West Ada parents especially, who are frustrated about how the class sizes in normal times in their schools. But schools are now allowed to levy impact fees. And when you take a look at your tax bill, you see that more than a third of it comes from schools. And were they allowed to make growth pay for itself and put impact fees in place? And were they allowed to make growth pay for itself and put impact fees in place that would take down your property tax bill?
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Well, you know, Commissioner LaShyondo talked about a fiscally conservative budget, but I, I really don't think it was as fiscally conservative as it could have been. You know, we received $16 million from the governor. You know, if they wouldn't take the 3% clawback. And so I think the, the budget was sort of artificially hogged, reduced by $16 million, I think, subsequently. I think we can do, I, I'm going to pledge that I won't do the clawback. I won't take the forgone taxes. I'll find other ways that we can make ends meet. But again, yes, it does come down to working with the legislature. I've got a, a good working history with all of the Treasure Valley Republican legislators and legislators from across the entire state that I've interacted with and worked with and lobbied with. And I think that's fundamentally where the change is going to happen at the state level, like Mr. Beck has said. And I think our Republican commissioners are going to be a better conduit to working with the Republican legislature to get this issue solved.
All right, so following up, continuing on questions of growth, we got another question that asks, you know, the county expects more growth in the years to come. So what plans do you have to help maintain and increase the safety and security of Ada County residents? And we'll start with Mr. Rutherford.
Yes, that's, that's a very good question, and I mean, growth is not going to stop. It, it has its own drivers. We're not going to stop it. It's, it's going to be here. People are going to come here. And again, it goes back to what we've been discussing, that, that, that puts demands on all of Ada County services. And some of those services are paid for by property taxes. Some of those services are paid, self-paying, where they have fees involved. When you come to the safety of the community, you know, you're really talking about emergency services. You're talking about Ada County Sheriff's Department, firefighters, you know, the people that, when you pick up the phone and you have an emergency, they, they show up. And fortunately, we do have impact fees available that can be used to address these costs for emergency providers. And, and I do think that as the county's already started to do, we should continue to do that. And I think if we use the impact fees wisely, we can ensure the safety of the additional population and not impact property taxes. So that's, that's what I really see as the future of, of that issue.
All right, Mr. Beck.
As I understand the question, it's how can we continue to have a safe community and to not have overly burdensome property taxes? Am I correct?
So this one's, you know, how, how do you plan to maintain or increase the safety and security of Ada County residents?
Okay, maintain the security and safety of Ada County residents. One would be to reject the, the notion of summoning the city of Boise to, to have Boise and Ada County become a sanctuary city. I think that would, would increase the, the security and safety of residents of Boise. The other one would be to, to not allow the, the, to keep cooperating with ICE when we have people that are, that are, that are arrested, to not, to not ask the, the ICE if they have, if they're there, we need to keep cooperating with, with ICE. Another one would be to, there, there was a, there's a proposal to eliminate cash bail, and I'm going, oh, wait a minute. Why would we want to do that? Anyway, I think the, some of the policies that we see in some of these other cities, like Minneapolis and Portland and Seattle, they're what's caught, that, those policies are what, are what causes some of the, some of the, the chaos that exists in those communities. And we don't have those policies here, and that's part of the reason why we have a safe community. And so I would like to continue to see, we have, we've got a good sheriff's department, because we have directly, direct responsibility with the sheriff's department. We also have a constitutional responsibility to maintain the jail. And I think if we, if we do the level best we can and not adopt those other policies that are in those other communities, we can maintain a safe community.
All right, moving to District Two, Mr. Davidson, or District One, sorry.
Well, I think we need to make sure that, you know, law enforcement keeps up with the rate of growth in the Treasure Valley. And I want to make sure that we have the best-trained sheriff's department, not just in Idaho, but in all the United States. We need to make sure that they have the funding necessary to get the job done, and to increase the level of training they have in dealing with mental health issues of Portland and Seattle. We totally passed 100 solid days of protests. The problem with the protests is that while there are many good people protesting on First Amendment grounds, the riots come right on the tail of that, and it's really grown from a protest to more of a riot. And it's, it's chaos with buildings getting burnt down almost every night. We're seeing this across the United States. I think the only reason it's not happening in Boise and in Ada County is because our, our population is low enough that we have the, the law enforcement resources to kind of keep that in check. Obviously, there's been, you know, some incidents in the past. There was a protest at the State House steps where, you know, people spray painted the Idaho State Capitol Building. You know, it didn't get too much out of, further out of hand than that. But as the Treasure Valley grows, you're going to get more and more people along that line who, you know, would like to burn things down. And so we need to make sure that law enforcement grows with the size of the population. And again, we need as much training as we can get our, our men and women in law enforcement to be able to handle all the unique situations of the 21st century. Let's make sure we have the best sheriff's department in the, in the country, and I think we can do it with some forward thinking.
All right, Ms. LaShyondo.
Thank you. So I want to answer this in a, in a couple different ways, because it's really about root causes, but also meeting demands as they're kind of hitting you in the face. So I do think it starts with how we plan, and depending on how we plan, services are more expensive to deliver. And I'll give you a great example. When we think about safety, especially right now in the time of, of COVID, our EMS, our paramedics are, are right at the forefront. And we had a recent development that was planned for an area that would have been 20 minutes for us to provide service to. And we run the countywide EMS system. The only way that we would have been able to bring it to an appropriate level, an eight-minute response time, would have been to go back to the taxpayers to increase those resources so that we could staff that up. Now, fortunately, we were able to convince folks that that was not the right timing, because we didn't want to burden existing taxpayers. So we do really have to think about how we're growing, and that's sort of that root cause issue. We also have to think about really safety holistically. And before even taking office, I was honored to be a part of Sheriff Bartlet's Safety and Justice Challenge community groups. And our sheriff's office has really been at the forefront of looking at, how can we invest in upstream solutions so that we aren't paying for expensive things down the road? And that's everything from investing in mental health and detox, both at the state level and things that we're doing here at Ada County, to really making sure that our officers are well-trained, investing in a social worker for the public defender's office. But ultimately, the rubber does meet the road, and we need to make sure we're investing in our people. And I think too often, there is the temptation to think that we can balance the budget on the backs of our people. And I'm really proud that for the past two years, even while we have been really thoughtful about our budget, we have made sure to invest in our people, because they're out there doing the hard work every day. And we know that it actually costs us more money to attract and retain new employees. So it, it really is that balancing act.
All right, so we believe that the Zoom ends right at 8:30, so we're going to move into clothing statements, so everyone has a chance for their clothing statement. We'll start with District Two this time, since you all went second for opening statements, and we'll start with Mr. Rutherford.
Well, again, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and, and talk to the voters. I'm, I'm really running to improve the lives of residents of Ada County. I'm running to keep property taxes low and to make sure that developers are paying their fair share of the cost of growth. I have over 40 years of experience as a professional engineer and a professional manager of, of large organizations, and I think I bring something that could help, help the county. I'm also running to make sure that we're getting through this pandemic. And when we come out the other side, we'll have healthy communities, and we can, we can resume our life, and we'll have a strong economy. And I'm running to reinforce efforts to grow the county responsibly. And that takes a lot of planning. As mentioned earlier, planning really is the key to this, thinking about what we're doing, what it's going to cost, the downstream impacts. And I have a lot of experience planning with not only corporate organizations, but in the government. And finally, we cannot be outpacing our, our growth, you know, ahead of our infrastructure, or that just, that just causes a lot of money. It costs us a lot of money, a lot of traffic, a lot of wear and tear on our, our present economy. So I think, again, it's planning. It's looking ahead, working with the agencies, the six cities, Ada County Highway District, also Canyon County, which is a major contributor to our traffic, and really looking ahead at the valley, taking, taking a view of the valley in total. And, and we can do that. We can plan that out and think ahead. So I'd like to thank you for your consideration, and I hope that I've earned your support for this election. Thank you.
Mr. Beck.
Well, thank you. I would like to compliment my fellow panelists here. I think we've had a respectful discussion, and I think that's what we need to have in today's environment. We need to have a respectful discussion. We can disagree on issues, but we don't need to be disagreeable. And I thank you, the League of Women Voters, for promoting and putting on this, this forum. I think it's been a good forum for us to discuss our, our issues. And I am running for this position because I do believe I can add value to the county commission. I have an extensive background in government with my experience in the, in the, in the legislature. I have good contacts with my fellow, with my former fellow legislators in both the House and the Senate. I think I can bring a valuable piece of, of, of knowledge to this position. And I think one of the things, we're going to have growth, and I, I think we need to, to do things that would increase the supply of housing. Housing is just so short right now. It's, it's, it's a surreal market where people are just buying things, and the prices are going skyrocketing. So we have to, developers don't pay these, by the way. It's, pay the impact fees. It's, it's the homeowners pay the impact fees because they're adding to the price cost of the home. And so, and there's not, no problem with, with impact fees, as long as it's done fairly and equitably, and, and all parties agree to it. So anyway, I hope that we've demonstrated to the public and, and your, your viewers that we, we are being respectful to one another, that we can have discussions, and that we don't need to be disagreeable. And I thank you again for your, your interest, and I'd ask for your vote.
Great, moving to District One, Mr. Davidson.
Well, thanks, and, you know, if, if I'm elected, I'm really going into this office as a fiscal conservative, and I'm looking to cut any wasteful spending that I can find. That's very important to me. I'll be going over the budgets with a fine-tooth comb. I'll be meeting with department heads and taking a look really closely at all the programs that we have going on and seeing where we can cut, where we can scale back, where we can innovate. You know, reducing property taxes, it's a huge priority for me. I, you know, people need to know that I am willing to work with the legislature, and I know we can get it done, not just for Ada County, but really for all of Idaho. I want the business community to know that I'm here for them and that I know that they've suffered through the COVID shutdowns, and I want to do everything in my power to help them get back on their feet. I, I am not going into office with the bureaucrat mindset. The bureaucrat mindset always says no, whatever the question is. And that's a trap that a lot of elected officials fall into. They, they go the safe route. I want to be able to say yes. Yes, you can do that. I want to empower all the incredible talent that we have here in Ada County to help us succeed. I am willing to talk to anyone, you know. I want to be an open book, and I want to be able to extend the dialogue to both sides. I think that by reaching across the aisle, we can accomplish Black Lives Matters protesters. I think we can talk it out behind the scenes. I have failed to do that. Now, I've certainly been somebody to go after the left in my political career, but I am here for everyone's civil rights, and fighting for civil rights has been a big part of my activism. So again, feel free to send me a message at my Facebook page, which is Ryan Davidson for Ada County Commissioner. And I want to thank everybody for tuning in. I really do appreciate your support, and I ask for your vote here in November. Thank you.
All right, Ms. LaShyondo.
Thank you. But I also want to very much thank the League of Women Voters. I really appreciate them taking the opportunity to put on this forum and all the work that they do to just expand accessibility. So I just want to close with this. I know that we are all tired and frustrated out there, and we are sick of the hyper-partisanship at the national level. And it doesn't have to be that way. This is where local elections come in. We do not have to choose to be divided. We can choose to roll up our sleeves and get things done. And as it pertains to the kind of person I am and how I work with folks, I'd ask you to take a look at my track record. I am from this community. I've dedicated my life to this community. I have served on boards and committees. I've taught children's bass dancing. And everything that I have done has been with an eye toward making sure that this is a place that my two young boys can also call home and feel proud to live here. I got right to work a year and a half ago tackling our toughest issues, and I ran to get serious about our challenges, and that's exactly what I've done. I want to continue that work, and I ask for the honor of your vote.
Great. Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we thank you all for your time. We're so thankful that you all came into this forum to share all your, your views. And we encourage the audience to be an informed voter. We're glad you're here. We're sorry we didn't get to all your questions. There are so many great ones. The program will be online in a day or two to review to the League of Women Voters of greater Boise, of social media. And we encourage you to reach out to the candidates and their campaigns if you still have questions. Well, thank you so much, and we hope you have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Night.